Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer? Thank you, Ms. Stats? Ms. Trillo?
Here.
And Dr. Sason?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. We'll hold the pledge until later. We're going to, I'm going to take a motion to move into executive session in a session, in a second. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows. The matter to be discussed is negotiations with the Hillsborough Principal and Supervisors Association. The matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroon. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. We are going to move into executive session and then we will restart the meeting around 7:30 after executive session is over. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. We are now back from executive session. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmood?
Totally. Dr. Sason, just an FYI that I did look at my text. Mr. Joette will not be at today's meeting. He did text me and indicated he will not be in today's meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mahmood.
Mrs. Haas? Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Ms. Trillo?
Here.
And Dr. Sason?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We have correspondences listed. For those at home watching on the Zoom, if you would like to make public comment, please refresh your screen and there will be information about how to do so below the video. I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes of the regular public meeting from October 26.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Thank you, Dr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining?
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmood. Okay. The superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Sason. Good evening, Hillsborough community, and welcome to our first meeting in November following a beautiful weather weekend. I hope everyone had some time to enjoy being outdoors soaking up the vitamin D and fresh air. I would like to remind parents and students that the first marking period ends this Friday, November 13th. On Monday, November 16th, the first day of the second marking period, anyone who choose to switch from hybrid learning to virtual learning or from virtual learning to hybrid will begin that day. Also, I would like to reiterate important information shared during my superintendent's report at the October 26th Board of Education meeting regarding travel over the upcoming holidays. If you plan on traveling anywhere on the New Jersey Department of Health Advisory list, students must quarantine for 14 days upon return to New Jersey. A negative COVID-19 test will not eliminate the need for quarantine. If a student has to quarantine, she, he, or they may log in remotely to his, her, or their classroom. Please contact the school nurse if you have any questions. Congratulations to Woodford School First Grade Teacher, Mrs. Amy Regan, who recently published a book, "Caring Kids: Coping Grounds for COVID Times." In a recent email from Mrs. Regan, she stated, quote, "I have been a teacher in Hillsborough for over 30 years. What has always kept me going is the students. COVID has not been easy for anyone. Our book shares a positive message to find the silver lining in challenging situations." Mrs. Regan, who is here tonight generously donated two books for each elementary school. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. That's my superintendent's report. You're muted.
Yep. Thank you, Dr. Antounas. Next, we will have comments from the board that were in, well, first public on the action agenda. And we very much welcome input from the public during board meetings. There will be a period of time that the meeting will be open for public comment where the members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do via Zoom in person if they are attending in person, or via written comments sent via letter or email to BOEpubliccomments@https.us. I should note that those comments are due by noon the day of the meeting, and we did not receive any today. Members of the public may comment about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes, or may comment on any school or district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per Bylaw 0167. Before you state your question or comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent may address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. So I'm going to clarify this, that at the end of our last meeting, we did discuss expanding the public comment period to two different public comment periods, limited in time to an hour total. And all comments would be limited to three minutes. We discussed allowing members of the public to make a comment about anything in both public comments, so comment periods, so that we were able to, you know, if we were having an especially long late meeting like we did last time, that we weren't keeping people up late if it was unnecessary to do so. But I do want to say that I am going to ask that the first public comment period, that people first be allowed to go who have a comment on the agenda, so that we don't push anything to the end of the meeting and then realize that somebody had a comment about an agenda item. So, and I think we determined there would be a half hour at each point. So, and Mrs. San Giuliano, who is virtual, is going to be keeping the time for me and will let me know when somebody is approaching the three minutes, and also the 30-minute time period. Okay. With that being said, do we have any comments from people in the, in the public, from the public? Please come up, yes.
I just want to take a minute. Amy Regan, and I'm donating the book, and this is my friend Karen. We've been best friends since we were three. And I just want to say that during COVID, there's so many things that go on, and we really just wanted to do something positive. And something that I wanted to mention in the book is that we named the teacher in the book after our second grade teacher. And she had such a positive, positive impact on the both of us and encouraged me to always write. And I still have the folder that I wrote in second grade of my poems. And something that I hope, and I work next to fabulous teachers in this district that has always made me so proud. And we hope that our students will continue to write. I know I've gotten through so many times in my life by writing. So the other thing is that in, during COVID, when we want to do something positive, we hope our book will reach out to educators and parents and kids to find the silver lining, that maybe it is spending more time with family, maybe it's being resilient, maybe it's not rushing around so much, maybe it's just being more patient with one another and being a little flexible or finding a little grace and just a little extra kindness. So we hope that it brings a little positivity. So when you see the cover of a book, you'll understand our T-shirts and our masks, the masks on the cover of the book, they be fine. So that's something that we emphasize in the book. And speaking of writing and the love of writing, we also create a companion journal to go with the book that has writing and drawing prompts that correspond with each page of the book. So again, we just hope it'll be something positive that will continue to help us get through the really challenging and untriggered territory that we've been kind of tracing through together. So thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and share these before. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I absolutely agree with you about the positives that can come out of what we're going through. In my address to the high school seniors who are graduating last year, I said just that. Think about the, I look, this is a gift with my children who are in college who I, that I would not have had. And I think we, as this continues to go on, we're going to, it's going to be harder and harder to find those positives. And it's really important that we spend maybe five minutes a day trying to think of something that's good that's come out of this. So I appreciate that, and I, and thank you for your donation. Thanks. Anyone else for public comment? Mrs. Salinger? Yeah, I think, I think it's fine. I don't see, I don't see any hands raised for any agenda items, so it can be about anything. Thank you.
It's for a taller person. Taller than me, too.
Okay. Amy Salinger, teacher at Otten Road Intermediate School and HGA pressure. Good evening. I would like to speak tonight about collaboration. As a staff, we take pride in promoting collaboration among our students because we know collaboration leads to better results. It is a best practice in education. In the spirit of collaboration, the leadership of both the district and the HGA embarked on entering the Labor Management Collaborative Offered Directors. This was over two years ago in March of 2018. In the short time afterwards, we established a district leadership team, DLT, as well as school leadership teams in four of our buildings. I was tasked to co-chair the DLT and was ready and eager to begin the work. The lines of communication and collaboration had been opened in a new way. We were holding meetings and making progress. In the fall of 2019, changes were made to district upper administration, and the work of the DLT was put on hold. In the winter of 2020, with COVID looming, other areas understandably became a priority. During this time, upper administration did meet with HGA leadership, and it seemed the lines of communication were still open. During the initial shutdown of our buildings to say things were unprecedented is an understatement. However, the HGA leadership made it clear throughout that we were willing to collaborate and keep lines of communication open. As the shutdown continued, there seemed to be a shift in just how open those lines were from district leadership. As co-chair of the DLT, I sent emails to Dr. Antounas on June 10th and June 16th about restarting the DLT to prepare for reopening. This was prior to the governor's announcements of guidelines, and the response I received indicated we should wait for something more official. Governor Murphy announced reopening guidelines on June 26th, and on that day, I sent the third email, which in part said, quote, "We are ready and willing to get to work and collaborate to ensure the best possible plan for HTTPS to reopen." I was told that the district would be putting together committee and HGA leadership would be involved. July 10th was the first meeting of the DRC. In this meeting, all five members of the HGA leadership were present, but by the end of that meeting, it was clear only two of us would be permanent members of the DRC, and the rest could just substitute when needed. We expressed our disappointment and disagreement, but no changes were made. Flash forward to the actual reopening of schools. To be brief, there were issues. To be clear, HGA leadership always made attempts to reach out in a collaborative way first to solve these problems. These attempts were unfortunately met with dismissive responses. At the last BOE meeting, there seemed to be hope of opening the lines of communication again with talk of meeting to collaboratively discuss some of the ongoing issues in regards to staffing and leads. My message tonight is this. The HGA leadership always has been and always will be willing to collaborate with the Board of Ed and district leadership. Our willingness comes from our desire to always put what is best for our members, our students, and this community first. We believe open communication and collaboration are the key to this. Just like collaboration is best practice in classrooms, it can and should be best practice for this as well. Thank you.
Can you speak again? I can hear you. Can others hear him? Joel, can you hear him, or should he get up? Okay, thanks, Henry. Oh, yeah, let me, you did it for me. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, Henry.
Thank you. Henry Goodhue Hillsborough Education Association, good evening. At the last board meeting, some members of the board expressed that they were open to revisiting accommodation requests because that would be in the best interest of students and staff. We publicly stated our commitment to collaboratively engaging in the process of this, similar to the steps taken by surrounding districts. Thus far, we've received no response from the leadership or from the district regarding this, and we continue to lose dedicated and skilled staff, as evidenced by tonight's agenda. Ultimately, the board and administration must decide if the current course of action supports our educational goals, or if they will continue to undermine and erode the efforts as more and more staff choose to leave the district. I realize that my perspective on this matter may not resonate with some members of the board or the administration, so I decided to look back through records and compare our current employment trends with those from the same timeframe of last year. In July through October of 2009, or 2019, rather, our district saw seven retirements. So far in 2020, we have seen close to a 42% increase in retirements. In the same period of time, we had 16 resignations. Currently, we are approaching an increase of almost 24% of resignations. The same months in 2019 saw 20 staff members take leaves of absence compared to now, which has a 44% increase. If the current trends continue, we can expect higher-than-usual retirements and resignations in the coming months, especially December, when the trends, when there tends to be more retirements. Left unchanged, these trends, these trends will lead staffing to, excuse me, left unchanged, these trends will lead to staffing shortages worse than those currently encountered and make it far more difficult to achieve the district's mission statement of providing a superior education for all students. I once again restate our commitment to collaboratively addressing the accommodation requests of staff members and the educational needs of our students. I realize there has been conversations about various ways to do this, but question why we have yet to reconvene the District Restart Committee. The topic of staff accommodations was discussed numerous times in DRC meetings this summer. Therefore, the means to continue these conversations already exists. Further, with recent enactment of Executive Order 192, there are new protocols, processes, and supplies that need to be brought into our schools to ensure compliance. We have the responsibility, in addition to the existing process, to continue these conversations and collaboratively find a path that meets the needs of both students and staff. The only thing left is needed for this necessary collaboration to occur successfully is the full board administration to make the choice to work together to best meet the district's needs as opposed to continuing with the current dynamic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with public comment? Seeing none in the room, I'll turn to the, Mrs. Kazari. I'm elevating you to panelist. And I am unmuting you.
Uh, am I on?
Yes, you are.
We're good. Okay. Good evening, Board of Ed. Sylvie Kazari, 281 Otten Road. My comments tonight are in reference to the HTTPS All Staff email entitled Genesis Grade Book for Teachers that was sent out today at 8:31 a.m., signed by the curriculum supervisors and secondary school principals. I find it extremely problematic and unfair to our students that with only four days remaining in the marking period, you are directing our staff members to change the grading profiles that we've been using for the past few school years. Previously, we had been instructed to grade missing assignments with a score of 50 rather than zero, so that the zeros would not tank a student's average and negate the work that they had completed. Today, we are instructed to do the opposite. Given that online learning already presents many challenges to our students, it is really unfair to now score missing assignments as zeros as they have not been scored that way all marking period. The change in grading policy will most certainly negatively impact the averages of students who have been struggling to complete their assignments and will now only have four more days to try to get them in. It would mean a C, a D, and D averages will now become F averages. I don't understand the reasoning behind this change, nor would I be able to communicate that to parents of my students. Therefore, I am requesting that the district-wide policy, which is being set forth by the curriculum administration and supervisors, be explained to the parents by the group of people who created it. And before you make the statement that I should bring this to my school's administration, I did that today, and they did not have any answers for me. There was a memo sent out in mid-August by Dr. Feltry that did not mention any of this. Again, I ask you, why is it that we're getting this directive the week the marking period is over? Finally, if this is the route that the district wants to go in during these unprecedented times, then it needs to be communicated to parents by the assistant superintendent and started at the beginning of the year, so, or in the case, the beginning of next marking period. It is obvious that this was overlooked, and now we are backtracking. I, as well as my colleagues, feel like the scapegoats. Please consider a district-wide message sent to parents on this matter, as well as starting the procedure with the second marking period, when all parties have been notified and understand the new grading rules. Perhaps even holding a grading open house led by upper administration would, that would be the best route, as rationale for doing this has not been explained to teachers yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kazari. Any other public comment? Let's see, Ms. Gordon. Ms. Gordon, I'm going to unmute you now. Ms. Gordon, I'm requesting that you unmute yourself so you can speak.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. All right. Dana Gordon for Dumont Round in Hillsborough. I wanted to address the board about the transparency with COVID cases and its reporting. Since 10/8, the district has reported 16 cases. Our town has recorded a total of 34 cases of school-aged people. While some of these cases might be too young to attend the school and others might be at the age of 19, I'm questioning why the number presented on the school website is so low. I have to question when I hear from parents of cases in aftercare, a program which is run in conjunction with the schools. Why were these cases not recorded? The district was the one that sent out the survey for aftercare, and the cases happened on district property. If the kids were attending aftercare and tested positive, then those students would have been positive the hours before aftercare began. Knowing that there were cases at aftercare makes me think. Those 18 other cases, were there kids that got them from other school activities? I have brought to your attention numerous times how badly this virus is replicating in our town. I have come to you when we had only 15 cases in a week. I came to you when we had 29, 32. Now we have 65 cases in one week's time. We had 33 cases just today, which, mind you, is over half of what we had as a week total last week. We need to be transparent about every school-related case. The public needs to be aware of how badly this is spreading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Let me see if there are any. Mrs. Romano, I'm going to elevate you to panelists and then ask you to turn your video and camera and unmute. Go ahead, Ms. Romano. Yes.
Hi. Tara Romano, Hillsborough Health Department and 490 Otten Road. I just wanted to put that there to everybody, that I have a nurse who works with the Hillsborough Department of Health, which, Shabon Spano and Nick DeLisi. We are calling many, many cases now. The cases have increased exponentially over the past two weeks in our township. It's not necessarily translated onto the school-acquired cases, and it's not necessarily showing up as a lot of children who are getting sick. However, we do have households of people who are sick with children in those houses who are not getting tested because their parents have opted to not do that. I just need everybody to know that we are not looking to steal information from you. We are not looking to invade your privacy. What we are looking to do is to look out for the better welfare of the entire community. That includes our township people, our schools, our classes, our teachers, our students, whether they're hybrid, whether they're virtual. Just because you are not sick from this does not mean that the person next door to you cannot get sick. We are seeing hospitalizations. We are seeing secondary pneumonias, and the asymptomatic cases that we were seeing in the summer are not here now. This is back what we are, we're looking at from March to April, and it is getting worse week by week. So please just cooperate, have full transparency about your household, and if you're keeping your household safe and contained in quarantine, that means you're helping other households and staff and other kids to prevent getting sick. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romano. Any other attendees? Seeing none, I'll close the first period of public comment and open board comment. Any board members want to comment? No? Okay. I will say that it, that it is incredibly important, as I said before, that people collaborate and take personal responsibility, but also be truthful to the Department of Health. If there is somebody in your household that has tested positive and you have children in the, in the school district, keep them home from school. If your child seems off in any way, please keep them home from school. I do have to say that we have gotten some questions about the website and the numbers on the website, and in all cases, the answer has always been that we, when we are made aware of cases, we, we put them on the website. The, and that is if people are hybrid or if they are virtual but participating in any school activities. So if they are fully virtual and not coming in for any, any activities and they test positive, we likely would not even be, be told that. If a child is positive, is a virtual child, but is participating on a sports team or, or has some other reason to come into the school. has some other reason to come into the school district, they are included. Aftercare cases are included if a child tests positive. If it's a staff member who doesn't come in contact with students, that probably would not be included. However, the students might be quarantined. So I do want to be clear that I have, while I am not directly the one involved on every single case that I have heard about or when questions come in on email, I have a conversation with Dr. Antounas, who has assured me that all of the numbers on our website are, in fact, truthful and transparent, and that we are working very, very closely with the Department of Health to ensure that appropriate contact tracing is done, appropriate quarantining is done. But we do need the public to assist in this process by being truthful and exhibiting some personal responsibility. So I honestly have been pleased overall that, you know, that we haven't had cases that seem to have been generated in our schools. That is a testament to the work that our staff, both our custodial staff and our teaching staff, are doing, and I believe that a lot of parents who are, who have chosen the hybrid option are doing their best to not put something in our schools that could spread. But as the numbers increase within our community, it becomes even more important for us to maintain a higher level of vigilance. Again, if your child wakes up and is off in any way, please just let them be virtual until you're sure that they are not symptomatic. Okay. With that, unless any other board members have a comment, we will go on to the education agenda. Thank you, Dr. Antounas.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows. 9.1, motion to approve policy and regulations for second reading as listed. That is it.
May I have a motion to approve item 9.1? Thank you, Mrs. Husk. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Mrs. Husk?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulser?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahia?
Yes.
And Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources Agenda as follows, 10.1 to 10.10, including motion to approve retirements and resignations as listed. I'd like to point out the retirements of Kathleen Jacobs, who has been with the district for 21 years, and Nancy McDonald, who's been with us for 28 years, and we thank them for their service. Motion to approve the policy and regulation for second reading as listed. Motion to approve revised appointments and revised intramural advisors, as well as motion to approve leaves of absence appointments as listed. Motion to approve winter coaches, mentors, and buddies, and seventh-period coverages, as well as extra coverage.
I'm going to separate out item 10.7. Can I have a motion to approve items 10.1 through 10.10, with the exception of 10.7?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulser. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Stats. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely, Mrs. Husk? Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulser?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahia?
Yes.
And Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve item 10.7, winter coaches.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulser. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, may I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely, Mrs. Husk?
I actually have a question, sorry.
Go ahead.
Are these coaches going to be able to coach, given that there are new restrictions on winter sports?
So the way that the contracts are written, that even if they cannot meet in person, they are supposed to have a program and maintain contact with their athletes, and under the guidance of Mr. Davis, they would continue to have a program that would be enriching for our students. Okay, so Mrs. Husk is a yes vote, Mr. Mahmood. I didn't know if you could hear that.
I did, no, thank you. Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulser?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahia?
Yes.
And Dr. Sasan?
I don't think he heard that.
Oh, sorry. I muted myself instead of unmuted. Abstain, Mr....
Okay, thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the operations agenda as follows. We're going to do 11.1 and 11.3 and separate out 11.2. So let's go with 11.1, motion to approve the settlement agreement and the motion to accept the donation as listed.
So moved.
Who was that?
Jane.
Thank you. I didn't ask for the motion yet.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pulser. Mr. Mahmood, can we have a roll call, please?
Surely, Mrs. Husk? Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulser?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahia?
Yes.
And Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve Operations Agenda Item 11.2, the motion to approve the resolution to ratify the agreement between the Hillsborough Township Board of Education and the Hillsborough Principals and Supervisors Association, 2020 to 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulser.
Second. Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Maroon. Mr. Pulser, would you like to give the public a little background information?
Yes, certainly, Dr. Sasan. The previous contract with the HPSA actually expired as of June 30th of this year. Obviously, we had a few other things going on at that time, and we were unfortunately, for both sides, unable to get together in time to work on a new contract before that one expired. We were fortunate that after we were working through, actually, before, just before we were done with the DRC work, we were able to hold our first negotiations meeting in late August, and we've been working with the HPSA since then. We were fortunate enough to get it all wrapped up last week. We were able to iron out the last few pieces, and the HPSA thankfully was able to expedite both signing off on the memorandum of agreement and also ratifying the contract, so that we could also ratify it tonight and move forward with that action. So we thank the HPSA for their efforts through the midst of all these other things that we've had to worry about for the last few months and working with us very collaboratively to get this done and be able to move forward.
And I can say that I have a ratified and signed contract in front of me here, so as soon as the board, as the board ratifies, I will sign it. So with that, do we have any questions from the board? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely, Mrs. Husk?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulser?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahia?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mahmood. We have informational items as listed. And then I'll open the floor for the second period of public comment. Now, 8:12. Mr. Goodhue. I will elevate you to panelists, and then I'm going to ask you to turn on your video and... You're all on, good.
Thank you, Dr. Sasan. I'll be very brief. Just in reference to the reporting of numbers, I want to urge the board to embrace reporting more, especially when it comes to programs that may be run in our schools, not necessarily directly by our schools, be it aftercare, beforecare, whatever that may be. We're making assumptions based off of where staff members are and not taking into account some of our ESP members, like our Buildings and Grounds crews that may work in and out of buildings, our custodial staff who clean areas after there has been aftercare in there. And under the new executive order, we are required to report any possible exposure in the workplace. So I want to urge the board to embrace that, to move forward, and err on the side of caution, report more, and consider that sometimes it's not as cut and dry as whether or not someone's in a room or that it's someone from an outside organization, because we have members that work throughout the buildings at all different times, and we want to make sure that we're taking all of that into account when the numbers are going out there. So that was all. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodhue. While I believe that number may not have been reported, I see your point, and I also I also think that they were, that appropriate staff members were told. So... Any other comments from the public? I see none in the room, nor online comment from the board. Mrs. Trahia?
So I wanted to ask a question about the process for noticing public board meetings. I know that there was an email sent out to the entire school district, so that was parents and I assume students, I'm not sure, and staff, that the October 26 meeting was going to become a hybrid meeting and that people could come to be here in person. For this meeting, there was no notice, and I don't believe there was anything on the website. So my question is, for the sake of over-communicating to the public and to build trust in the Board of Education, is, what is the process for noticing public board meetings?
I'm... Mr. Mahmood can answer that question best. Mr. Mahmood?
Yeah, it's going to be a combination, Lisa, me and Vic. But public in meeting of a notice is, we are required to notice it to two papers based on an organization meeting, and we are required to indicate sort of what the meeting place is going to be, the time, and certainly in these parameters, you know, what the conditions are for the board, whether we're going to have a Zoom meeting, the attendance factor, and all the other indications that we put on in the past. So that's typically every notice that we put out, Mrs. Trahia, we did run through legal, and Vic has sort of said, this is the way we can notice it, based on the pandemic. So I think this is a little different for us, but I think we're following the law. If there are any recommendations, we'd be happy to take them and certainly take them under advisement and consider revising a notification.
Yeah, I'll just say, I don't know if Mr. Lapira has anything to add, but I requested that the meeting notice was sent out prior to the October 26 meeting, since it was a change in the way that we were doing business. And in discussion with Dr. Antounas today, also recommended that we put it online from now on, because to remind people that they have to request to be here, we did have two people show up tonight that were not on, you know, did not make the request. We had capacity, so we let them in. But in the event that we would have over the nine-person limit that we can fit in the room here, we don't want people showing up after we have held a raffle or something and find out that they're not here. That's not the intent. So I do think that we will put the meeting notice on the website, on the front page of the website, when we submit it to the papers from here on out.
Thank you. So, but my other question is, according to the DCA, I believe that it is not meant to be a lottery. I thought that it was that anybody who wanted to attend had the right to attend, that there would be an overflow room. Am I misreading that, Mr. Lapira?
There is an overflow room available, should we need it.
Right. Technically, you don't have to have one. So the issue that comes up, just to, so we're clear, so if a board could choose to have a in-person-only meeting, and if the in-person, if the expected attendance at the in-person-only meeting, including everyone here, right, so all the board members, the administrators, the people who are in the public, is expected to exceed the room capacity, which as of today is still 25. If that is the case, then we're required to have both an in-person and remote meeting. And the DCA gives some discretion as to how we determine who can be in that meeting, because there is an issue that comes up with regard to fairness in terms of who is able to attend in person and who must attend remotely, because you could have a scenario in which you want, in which you want to have, or 20 people want to attend in person, and different boards are taking different approaches. If they come to that point, I don't know of anyone that has yet, most people are, most board meetings have limited public attendance, but if they want, they can decide whether it's through a lottery or some other provision. It doesn't even have to be a lottery. It could be first come, first served. It could be the first people who get here or the first, you know, seven or eight people who sign up. But I think by doing it in such a way where we require people to sign up, and then if there are more than we can accommodate, then we would do a lottery. It's meant to be fair in the sense that if you have just basically no registration, just people show up and we allow them in, it would be unfortunate for people who, you know, are standing in line out there, and then, you know, the ninth person, we say, well, you've got to go home and watch it, you know, at your house. So that's why having a registration, and then if we know there's going to be more than eight people or whatever the number is that we can accommodate, then we have to come up with a way. But the DCA's regulations don't speak to that explicitly. I mean, that's one of the areas that they probably need to think about, but my guess is, based upon my conversations with people from DCA, my guess is they're going to leave that portion up to the discretion of individual boards of education, because everyone has different scenarios, right? In a larger district such as Hillsborough, you may have more public who wish to come out, and some of the smaller districts who represent, they're lucky if they get two people at any meeting. So they can probably just do first come, first served, because it's not going to be a lot of people who are likely to show up. But there's no legal requirement to do any of those things. There's flexibility in how we determine who is going to be able to be part of the meeting. And of course, if the meeting limit sizes go down below 25, or if they go to like 15 or something or whatever, then we'll have to determine whether or not, at that point in time, you might have to have, well, 15, you'd be fine. You'd still do the same thing, but you'd have less members of the public participate. If no members of the public can come, then you have to have a virtual-only meeting. You can't have people attend in person and exclude the members of the public, which is what the new regulations say. So it's, the regulations are lengthy and a little bit, I wouldn't say that they're complicated, but there are some issues that probably, when they get comments in mid-November, as they're determining whether or not to make these final, there may be some changes. I'm not sure. We'll see, as a result of that notice and comment period from the DCA.
So I don't think I really understood what you said.
All right.
So just the bottom line is, is an overflow room required?
No.
Or, so, but can the board decide to have an overflow room in case that public, in case the in-person capacity would be greater than 25?
You can. You can. I suppose the issue that comes up with the overflow room is, realistically speaking, with the overflow room, they're still participating virtually. They're not really here. I mean, they're here in the overflow room, but it's no different if they were sitting in their homes. They're not going to be in this room with all of us, so I, you know...
But could they, when it comes time for public comment, could they then come into the room, like trade with somebody?
Sure, if people are willing to do that. That's kind of the issue, right?
But who makes that determination? Because I guess the reason I'm bringing this up is, in talking with school boards, field services representative, she recommended that we over-communicate to the public, and that was, the purpose of that is to build trust in the community. And so while we may think that coming to a school board meeting in person may not be the most exciting or interesting thing, I would like the public not to feel as if we are not allowing them to by having this lottery. That is my concern. So...
Okay.
I would like to, I would like to have the public feel that they're welcome, that there is not... that there is not some sort of lottery to have a seat in the room. Now granted, tonight there were extra seats, so that wasn't an issue. In the future, if there was some issue that might be more exciting, say, that people would want to come in, and because there is, there is definitely a difference, there's a difference between being virtual and only being able to see like what was, what's in the square of Zoom versus being able to see body language and being able to see just people's reactions. I, I think that just in the, in, as we were hearing tonight, in the spirit of openness and transparency, that we would think about this as a board. So I wanted to know what the process for that is, and it sounds like the DCA does not give specific requirements, that it's something that each board can decide for themselves, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Absolutely. And, and yes, to your point, you, you could do that, you could have another overflow room. The only issue that comes up, and I think that the board and the committees will need to discuss and whether or not that's doable is, you know, what, what you need to do is have people who attend, who are here, not in the overflow room, agree that when someone wants to talk, then if we are at 25 in this room, someone has to leave, and then maybe come back. So whether that's doable or not, I don't know, but that is a possibility that the board could explore, absolutely.
How, how would, what would the next steps be for that? Like which committee would talk about it?
It would not be, I don't think it would be a committee thing, I think it would be a, a full board thing. And I, I mean, I, I do think that we need to, we can't talk out of both sides of our mouth here, right? I mean, we cannot keep telling people that, that this is a very bad virus, and then keep bending rules to accommodate that, that if we deem it to be unsafe. And I mean, I, I wouldn't want somebody coming in and sitting where somebody else sat. That is, that is not something that, that I would want to see. Now, coming in, making a comment, not touching anything, and then walking out is a very different, is a very different thing. But, you know, we don't know. You know, not that I don't trust the people here to have answered truthfully, we don't know, you know, who's coming into, into the, into the building. And so I think we, we do have to be mindful of the fact that, that people can be put at risk depending on how, how, how seriously people feel the situation is with the virus. And there is a broad spectrum of people who, who thought that today, a week after, almost a week after Election Day, there would be no virus. What we're seeing is the polar opposite of that, it's worse, it's getting worse than it was in March and April. So, I mean, I, I do think that it's all fine to talk about these things, but honestly, the difference, in my opinion, of sitting at home and, and being on Zoom versus, you know, sitting across from us and being on Zoom or coming up and speaking is, is very little difference. You can turn on your video, you can be seen, you can be heard, you can flail your arms if you want. I mean, you know, we see that. But I do think that we have to be mindful of the fact that we are operating in a pandemic and that we, we of course want to hear from the public. That is not, you know, what we're, what I'm suggesting, that we don't want to hear from them. But I do think that we can't say, we can't have your kids here four days a week, but you, but we can have as many people as we want come and speak at a board meeting. That is not something that is valid in my mind, you know, in terms of SAT speak, that would not get the, this equals this sort of comparison to me. So I do think we need to be mindful of that. Any, any other board comment? Mrs. Stats?
I, I do think though that there is some validity to having more flexibility as far as allowing people to come in. And I'm very much, I very much take this, take the, the virus very seriously. It's a logistics that would be a problem, you know. I, I do thi, I think it's doable without bending, you know, safety considerations, but the planning of it and the logistics would, would be consideration. But as, as you said, Dr. Sasan, I pride, it seems like maybe the only way to have people come in and out is, especially the people coming in would not sit down, they would go up there and speak. And the reason why I would want to accommodate that is, maybe coming from someone who's not exactly a technology expert, some people might be more comfortable speaking in person as opposed to from home remotely. Just something, just so that we're really covering all the bases and while still being safe. So, but it is the planning and logistics that I acknowledge could be a problem, but not something we can't overcome.
Yeah, I, I, no, I certainly think we can accommodate some things. What I, what I'm trying to say is it can't be sort of a free-for-all of everybody come. I mean, I, I feel particularly comfortable with people signing up ahead of time and, you know, guaranteeing some spots in the room. We also don't want to get to a point where we're going to need additional staff members here to, you know, sort of shepherd people through the process, because that reduces the number of people that we could actually have in the room. So I, you know, I, that's an important thing. I had, Mr. Pulsofer, did I see Mrs. Haas wanted to speak to, and Dr. Harris? Go ahead, Mr. Pulsofer.
Yes, I, I agree that we should try to find a way to, to let the public be engaged, but I think we also have to be, you know, honest with ourselves. You know, we talked about, you talked about being able to see, see our reactions and see everything else. But the reality is, if those people come in from the gym or, or wherever, they're not going to see the whole meeting in person anyway. So all they're going to see, while it may be some value, all they're going to see is us reaction to their statements, not our reaction to anybody else's statements. So it is still very much similar to what they would do at home. The other question, this is, the other part is a question for Mr. Lapira. I would assume that if we start talking about overflows, we still have the same requirement on a per-room basis, which would mean that the gym, I would assume is big enough, that the capacity is big enough, we could go to 25. But then if we had an exciting, I think you said you used the word exciting, Jean. If we had an exciting issue, if we went to classrooms, we're talking a quarter of the classroom, right? So that's like seven, six? I mean, I think the, one of the problems is if we have a, if we have an issue that would actually generate a large audience, I'm not sure how we get them into all these classrooms and meet those requirements. So I think in, if, if an issue came up that was that important to have people in, that would be the hardest meeting to get it to work right, because we'd have people all over the place, and we also have to set up networking and everything else, so the public could get on our networks in all these other rooms, which we've made open in, in this room. So there's, there really are a lot of things to, to Miss Stats' point, a lot of logistics, if it grows at all, because we still have those restrictions on people in a room and people moving around.
And, and we have, we would have to clean all of those areas afterwards. So our staff, you know, so we would incur additional staff time to clean and potentially put those staff members at risk, depending on, on how truthful people were. I mean, I, I do think that our classrooms, as long as people were physically distanced by six feet, I, you know, we can't hold the public to a different standard than we hold our students and teachers to during a day. So I would think that we could probably get pretty close to, you know, 15 people in a, in a classroom spaced out, but we'd have to remove the desk probably to do that.
Well, I guess my question is, what, what is our, when we say capacity, what is the capacity of a classroom? Because my understanding is we're still at 25% of capacity or 25, whichever is lower.
I think it's a fire marshal.
Minimum of 10 also. 10 is the minimum in any given room. Yeah, I mean, but, so it, it's never below 10 and never more than 25 right now, unless it's like some kind of indoor sporting event or something like that, that you go up to 150 or something of that nature.
And I thought religious events and such were also, which we're not, but yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
And, and it's, and it's also, the fire marshal capacity is different than our class size capacity. So I mean, you know, so I, I'm sure a fire marshal could probably think in a 30 by 30 room, which is, most of our classrooms are about that, could fit probably, you know, 30, 40 people in it, you know, so pretty easily without, you know.
No, I, I was thinking in terms of the way we set our class size, in terms of trying to set that, that in, like, on road in the lower levels, we tried to shoot for like, what, 25 or 26, I think, at, at the high end, a quarter of which would be less now. I didn't realize there was a minimum of 10, so that would give more capacity, thank you.
Dr. Harris?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. No one else has a comment about that subject? I have something I'd like to address from some comments and questions from several residents in the community and some of my own former students. Several days before the election, I received questions from community members on Facebook and in emails asking me to address the negative flyers that had been distributed to the community through our postal mail, which was sent out to the Hillsborough community. I can only assume that the Garden State Forward is the dark side of the NJEA organization, for I could find little information on them, although they do share the same postal address in Trenton. And I recently found out that 100% of the funding comes from the NJEA. To my former students and concerned community members, the reason I did not address any of these demeaning flyers was that I have always taught my students to find positive, not negative, comments to share with others. My former first grade students, who now are adults themselves, may remember, the first day of school, I would ask you what your favorite Disney movie was and your favorite character. That told me a great deal about your personality and your character. It also led to, led to someone in the class being curious enough to ask me what my favorites were. My answer was always the same every year. My favorite movie was Bambi, because I feel like he might live in my backyard. And my favorite character, Thumper, the rabbit, because his mother taught him, if you don't have something nice to say, then don't say anything at all. We still are and have been for a long time trying to teach students anti-bullying and positive character development in our New Jersey state curriculum. What I experienced each time I received one of those flyers in my mail was deeply disappointing, for I thought our community had higher standards in the way we problem solve and use our critical thinking skills. After all, that is what we're expecting from our students, isn't it? The person or persons responsible for the attempted character derailment and this bullying technique showed animosity, frustration, and a lack of collaboration for the situations we have been facing with the COVID pandemic. We as a board don't run the district. We are here to make sure that policies are implemented and administrative goals are carried out, as well as advance student achievement and make sure the budget, budget is physically responsible. Thus, the flyers only showed in a negative way the true character of the person or persons responsible for generating them throughout the community. So when you ask me if I'm okay, no, I'm not okay with what transpired during the election for school board, but I've been inspired by the experience to work on a legislative proposal to make negative campaign ads unlawful, so that future board members will be able to run for a seat on the school board without fear of being demoralized by some disgruntled persons or person who needs to push forward a personal agenda and think that this type of campaigning is acceptable. It is not. Everything in the world is not perfect, but working in collaboration can gain much of the way for problem solving and extending critical thinking skills for even grownups. Imagine that. My new motto is union strong, sometimes wrong. My best luck to whoever lands seats for the next three years on this board, because you're going to need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Seeing no other comment, I'd like to take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Pulsofer and Mrs. Haas? All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.